Mr. Frick. Hello? You may want to kick on your mic.
I tried.
Nope.
Hold it down or something?
It's on.
Okay. Can you hear me now? All right.
We've got a defective mic on the end.
Probably just needs a battery. All right. How's yours working there, brother? It's the same thing?
Yeah.
Switch.
Oh, switch is to off. Yeah.
Thank you. Matt trained me.
Thank you, Mr. Lingerfeldt.
Okay, so it's 6:05. We're going to call the meeting to order. And item number two is public comments, and we have nobody in the audience. Unless anybody wants to speak as a public citizen and not a... We'll move on to item three. Consider approval of amendments at last meeting, March 30th.
Move to approve the minutes?
Got a motion? Need a second?
Second.
All in favor? Looks like unanimous. Okay, moving on to item four, which is our short-term rental land development redo. Or first do, I don't know. It's not a redo, is it? So we received stuff in the via email from Matt and both the full printout and the redlined versions. And I assume that everybody's had a chance to look at them. Looks pretty good to me. I have one thing, but anybody else want to start it off?
I was curious as to whether this answered Commissioner Frick's concern from the last meeting. He had, he was the one that championed the idea of the guest house and the travel trailer and all that. So did this satisfy you, sir?
No. Well, maybe. There's one term, and I think it was...
Tell us what made your...
There's there. Okay, well, we have the we have the definition. But then we never actually see that again throughout.
Oh, it's not, it's a defined term that's not used?
It's not used unless, unless it's the thing that Bob brought up about the main house and then like secondary house. I can't remember what else. That is what's, I'm thinking that maybe that took care of the guest house. And I understood that.
Can you answer that, Matt? Do you know where it was used?
So we're looking that up now. So I believe, so there was the issue, and I have to refresh my own memory. So later in the code, so you know, these sections are, you know, new, would be new sections. But there is the stipulation later in the code under land use, under guest house, where it gives the provision that guest houses are not to be used for any sort of financial compensation. So then I believe the discussion was whether that, you know, was that going to be addressed? Did that need to be amended? Like, are we allowing guest houses to be?
So I think
Used as short-term rentals?
I think John's question was, where is guest house used? What, where?
So where is it used?
So he can look at exactly what spot that was.
Maybe it's in the red line? Well, it should be because
Should be in both.
It was just redlined all the way through in that, in our last meeting.
That was, guest house was a definition that the definition had us add under section 150, 119.
Okay.
But, right, but then that's a defined term then.
And it's not used.
Yeah.
And then it's not used in the rest of the document.
Yeah.
And so it still leaves open the question to me. Are they, are they not?
Oh, I saw that. I thought I saw something about it.
Matt, can you control F that?
I didn't control that.
But it didn't show.
Yeah, so the only time it appears in the new, in the proposed regulations is in the definitions. But I suppose, yeah, that question still remains, John. We don't address it then later in the, in this section of the code. It is addressed later in the code where it says, can you pull that up, Sylvia, where it says?
Definition, a single guest house term that is defined.
But then there's, there should be a provision later. Yeah, so. So this is from 150, 134. A single guest house, can you scroll it down? Shall not pay rent or other compensation. Oop, there's a typo for use of the guest house or any portion thereof.
So that would mean no rental of a guest house?
I mean, yeah, rental, rent or compensation, to me, you know, I would interpret that as you can't use.
Okay.
You can't receive compensation.
Personally, I only brought up the issue, not that I have an opinion one way or another, but I don't see a problem with, this was an old version of our code about the, about the guest houses and everything. This was before people started doing the short-term rentals and our whole discussion and everything. So I would be fine with going back and changing that to where we had an issue with, with the trailers and the dumping and all that and the environmental impact of all that. But people, I think, are already renting out their guest houses in violation, really, I guess. Now, if you go back to this, what would be the big issue of not, not renting those out?
So are you asking what?
I mean, personally, I think it's fine to do that, to rent them.
Okay.
Especially during these times of high taxes and people are already wanting to do garage apartments or that sort of thing. We already have the guest houses that are fully furnished and ready for a family member to come and stay for a while. So why not rent it on a, for a short-term rental? It's just not...
Yeah, so I believe, if I was to take a guess, this language was added to prevent a guest house from basically creating a multifamily sort of situation. So maybe this, this section of the code could be amended. It couldn't be amended, the recommendation couldn't be amended tonight because it would need to be noticed that we were amending this section. But potentially, we could change this to any sort of, you know, long-term, you know, rent or compensation. Or you could just strike the language.
Well, don't we have that a short-term rental can, can't go longer than 30 days?
That is correct. Anything longer than 30 days by the state law, it's no longer than a short-term.
So that takes care of someone's having a long-term rental there.
So, yeah, so in, in, both in state law of what a, you know, short-term rental is and in our own definitions, we have, you know, the 30-day, it has to be, you know, for 30 days or less. But if, yeah, so.
So that's going to cause a conflict with in the definition section because we defined a residential structure as one family dwelling detached or attached. We made that distinct definition. So that fee for the guest house, and really, if I go back and I look at the comp plan and I look at our discussion about not, about single-family residential being primary and not allowing multifamily residential, I'd venture to say that's why that guest house definition is the way it is. I think I told you guys before, the, really, the only difference between a multifamily and single-family these days is the number of electrical connections. We only allow one meter to distinguish single-family, but that doesn't mean that you can't have a separate office on your site and it'll all be under one meter.
Is that what people that have a guest house are doing, keeping it on the one meter?
The only separate meters we really have are like irrigation meters and folks who decide they may perhaps want to put their pool or some other on a separate water meter. But typically, it is only one electrical meter.
I guess, I guess the issue is, are we willing to, as a city, not just us zoning, as a city to open up the short-term rentals to, a little further? Or do we stick with you rent?
Yeah, I think Robert's got some input on it. She'd like to put forward.
I'm going to give you my recollection of our discussion, and that is, I focused in on short-term rental means the rental of any residence or residential structure. Residential structure means a single-family residence, and it's one family dwelling, dwelling detached or attached, which didn't seem to address the issue of guest house. And I think that's why we have guest house. My belief was, I was in favor of okay, short-term rentals for guest house as they're defined because they're limited to three occupants per bedroom.
Yes.
And normally, the person who owns the property will still be there while doing the short-term rental of the dwelling unit. Now, that may not be true, but to the extent that you have a guest house that they're renting out, I thought that would be okay, but it was not necessarily clear because a residential structure means, and the only thing I think I was thinking that is we would put guest house as a specific enumerated number three. A residential structure means one, two, and then add in a guest house to make it clear that it is, we consensus, I thought, but, you know, that's where we're trying to remember what we did. So that's my, that's my comment.
Chairman Hughes?
I agree with that. If we, if we want it in, it would be number three under a residential structure means, and it would include a guest house. Or if we want it out, it would be in the, in the enumeration above would be number five under travel trailer. So depending on where you want it, in or out, it would be number five or number three. So it's just up to this body to make the recommendation to the, to the city council. But then that would pull in the definition that we've added. And I think you're right, we weren't intending it to be added, but we just, it didn't make it.
So just to be sure, what is the danger of it becoming a multifamily thing if?
I don't, I don't think there's necessarily a danger because, again, you're yeah, I mean.
It's a short-term.
It's a, it's a short-term. And, you know, again, there would be one, there would still be just one meter, right, for the, for the property?
There is just one meter, and that's the single-family, multifamily distinction. I think we get down a more slippery slope when our comprehensive plan says large and rural and single-family. Right, now you have a family and then now another family. You know, this body is charged with ensuring that we follow that, that big umbrella. So if we're going to include guest house, I think there has to be a stipulation that the main house be occupied by the primary resident. Otherwise, you have two potential short-term rentals on the lot. Does that matter to anybody on this board? I'm not sure. I think, I think we just go down a slippery slope.
Well, what we could do, I suppose, is stick with the way it's, this 150 is here where they, it's not allowed. And then in this one here, maybe that's what you guys are saying, this number four? A structure that is not permanently affixed, such as a travel trailer or guest house?
Number five.
Oh, yeah, we'd make that a separate.
Make it a number five.
Number five.
Oh, I see. Okay, well, that, that would conform to this and, and I guess we just wait till a resident brings up the point and council has to deal with it.
Well, hopefully not. Hopefully, we can, hopefully, we can hand over a prettier baby rather than an ugly baby.
Well, that would be good.
But, you know, from, from a, from a concern that we're saying the travel trailer, and I'll, I'll bring up a couple of examples of what I think landed us here to begin with is a property on Lone Oak who has two air streams out there as well as the home as well as a guest house subordinate to the garage. And that is being advertised as able to sleep X many. And so this one, in terms of structure not permanently affixed as a travel trailer, would prevent those two air streams from being the rented-out portion. But our code in other areas says you can have your family live in that travel trailer. So we've got to address the inconsistency there. My fear is just if we don't have our resident in the front, in the front home and we're, you know, sort of renting out the guest portion, I'm not saying we shouldn't, but you then have more than one short-term rental on the property.
Couldn't we add a provision that expressly says no more than one short-term rental on a property?
I think that would be the safest bet, all the way around. I don't think that you're going to stop people from renting their guest house, especially if it's a nice place that they fixed up, that it's supposed to be meant for family when they come visit. So it's already sort of outfitted for those things. It's very tempting and, you know, as Commissioner Frick has stated, with rent and mortgages as high as they are, it's a lucrative business. I think it would be wise to put a stipulation to limit it to one. Barbara, do you see anything wrong with that?
No.
Well, and maybe the wisest thing to do is move in, move into your guest house and rent out the big house for the, you know, big event or something.
That's what one of our residents is doing.
And that, but that would still be one per property.
So in order to do that, I would recommend that in section 150.119, which is the section that we're looking at, we add after short-term rental registration, means registration issued, whatever, after that provision, we add limitation of short-term rentals, colon, only one short-term rental per property is allowed at any one point, at any one time. One short-term rental per property is allowed at any time. And I know that's in the definition section. So I'd also be willing to move it into registration, I don't know, registration or, actually, no, restrictions, restrictions.
That number five.
At 150.122. Right? That's where it fits. I'm sorry, I was trying to stick it in definitions, it's the wrong place.
So we have it in two places.
It would have, just, just once, but it would be in the restriction section.
Oh. Well, you, but you're saying you also want to do the one rental per property?
Right. That would be in the restriction.
So that doesn't say somebody has a couple of properties, they could still rent in each one of those.
That's correct. And again, that's, that's if, I'm offering where it would go. I'm not saying that that's, I'm going to go with the will of the commission.
Well, I agree, that's where it should go. I have one question, and that is, what if you have one short-term rental that wants both structures? Are we okay with that or not?
As long as it's just one person renting.
I was going to say, I'm okay with one person renting, but if there's two different short-term rentals, there's only one short-term rental per
Property.
Per property.
Yes, it shouldn't be.
And they can rent out the tree house for all I care.
Yeah.
I mean, that doesn't work.
If they have the house and, and a
Guest house.
Guest house. It could be counted by bedroom, you know, the bedrooms and three people per bedroom.
The guest house takes care of that, I think, the definition. And so therefore, I think it all fits in nicely when you put it that way.
And I think that one rental per property?
Would take care of it.
As opposed to renting one structure per property?
Yes.
And if we want to elaborate, we can, but one rental per property?
I think for the sake of enforcement as well, if you, we get into a situation where there are multiple rentals on a property and something is going wrong, which rental is doing the wrong? You know, which tenant is doing the wrong? Which tenant gets cited? So one rental per property and whether they want to rent the main and the tree or the guest and the tree, et cetera, is, I think, appropriate.
You started something.
Never.
Okay.
So we have, in essence, two quick amendments whereby we add in to the definition of a residential structure means one, two, and then three, a guest house. And then we're adding in a section seven to 122. And the restrictions, no more than one short-term rental per property.
At any time.
At any time. At any one time.
At any one time, right. They could have serial rentals, but, yes.
Okay, say that again, no more than.
More than one rental per property at any one time. Yeah.
And then I'm back in the definitions. I'm, I think she's doing a PDF. I'm, I'm going to do a Word version, redline. But for a guest house, so it's a residential structure means, you know, one, two, we're adding three, a guest house. Are we saying, you know, as defined in this, you know, in this, or in 150, 119? Or same section?
Well, I think it works because we start off, maybe it's just, we need to, because it says definition for, for short-term rentals.
Yes.
So, I mean, statutory interpretation would indicate that it's limited just to this section. I was just thinking of a
So Sylvia brought up any kind of would you call it? If somebody, if somebody does have a problem there, you enforcement. What, so what would the enforcement be if somebody were to rent? Maybe it's, maybe it's annoying and they just didn't know they, they weren't able, weren't supposed to? Can we give them a
It's, it's a violation, it's a violation of the ordinance, therefore, they can be subject to non-renewal. I mean, it's
Lose their application.
Yeah, I mean, you can lose it through having loud, loud noises, having, you know, you know, like some of the parties on my street where there's public urination and the cops catch them, that kind of stuff. But, yeah. On your, on our street? Yeah. You know, you know what I'm talking about. Then
That was only, I only did it once.
Well, no, it wasn't you. At least it didn't look like you. But where was I? Oh, or you can lose it, you can lose your registration through things like lying on your application or not providing a, the local contact or something administratively. So in other words, you can, you can die by sins of commission or sins of omission. And in this case, it would be violating the administrative part.
Isn't there 150, 127B too? That violation of the ordinance?
Mm-hmm.
So there's teeth in there?
There's your enforcement.
Well, wasn't there something about charges too? If they continue?
Oh, yes, the penalty of $2,000 per day?
Each offense?
Oh, so if they, if they were Oh, so if they, if they were to rent it a second time thinking they were getting by, but they could be charged, 2,000? Are, are we done with this?
And, you know, and John, Commissioner Frick, you know, staff will, once, you know, if and when this is implemented, you know, staff will, the, the registration process will begin and staff will also, you know, they'll be the ordinance, but, you know, will also create like a packet that's much more palatable than this legalese that, okay, here are the rules. And so so it's like bulleted so that when someone's registering, they know exactly what the rules are.
Sounds good. Okay, have we finally settled that one? I think so.
Further discussion on that or we got that nailed down?
I think we're good.
Uh, let me, let me bring up, uh, one, section 150, 127A under G. I think it's the second to last page, second to last page, yeah. The shall upon majority vote of four fifths of the board. Well, I, I guess that would be like a super majority. It's a simple three. Current standard for what?
That's the current standard for the vote of the Board of Adjustment, four fifths.
For, for that particular board?
Yes.
They made that rule?
And, and they have final say too.
All right. I, I thought just a simple majority would be fine.
Nope. When they grant a, a variance, it takes four fifths.
Okay.
Which is why it was urgent for us to appoint an alternate because if there is an absentee, then the case is noticed and we're hearing the case, but truly can't take action on the case.
Okay. Anybody else say anything?
I cannot resist.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Section 150, 122B. It has one, but nothing after that.
Yeah. Should be, should, yeah, you need a two.
All right.
There is no, there is no two.
Under proper outline, you can't have a one if you don't have a two. Or an A without a B. You need at least two in order to enumerate.
I stayed awake in all my review.
And it, uh, is reassuring to me that, uh, that it is unlawful to, uh, do a short-term rental for the purposes of selling illegal drugs. Amongst other things, apparently.
And you cannot use your Apple products, uh, to deploy a weapon of mass destruction. That is actually in the terms of service.
Apple product. You can use any other product. Just not Apple.
So cannot detonate a nuclear weapon with, with your iPhone. This is along Robert's comments, this is very technical as well. I have no problem with the way this is written. But generally in the, in the regulatory world, a registration and an application are two different things. A registration being you provide the information and it becomes a ministerial act on the administrative body, on the bodies, you know, they need to then give you your registration, whereas an application is something that you can be denied uh, based on the merits of your cause, your case, what you put forward. This, I think, is a registration, yet on the template and other places, we call it an application or applicant. Except most people are going to use the terms synonymously. I just wanted to point that out in case we wanted to tighten it, um, that a registration is one thing, providing information, whereas an application is, am I worthy? Do you guys want to do anything about it or just leave? I, I'm fine leaving it. Like I said, it would be a really, really hyper-technical nerd to understand the difference between the two.
I'm, I'm, I'm happy with hyper and I'm happy with nerd and I'll tell you because um, the more loosey-goosey we are now, the worse it is for us to enforce later on and if we get called to court, et cetera, et cetera. So if you wouldn't mind getting with us as to where your recommendations to make those changes would be, I would appreciate it.
Okay.
And there, there are several places where an applicant or registration holder, so I think it should just be a registration holder.
Or reg, registrant?
A registrant.
A registrant?
Right, so.
Yeah.
We need to clean this.
Would, would that also?
So basically just remove, because it's not an application, it's, it's a registration. And, and, yeah, and so essentially, I believe, right, it's, if they meet the requirements, they will be, they will be registered. That's, as opposed to, that's why we're not going through the whole special use permit application process like we do for other zoning.
That, that's correct.
Would that also affect, uh, like building permits and all kinds of other things? Are they used?
Building permits, those are applications and they are applicants. And so that, that is a
Okay.
That, that's a process separate and a process.
Good. I don't want our staff to go through that.
Our own system. It's, yeah.
I appreciate your nerdiness. I like it. Anything else? So, uh, that being the case, we would, uh, yes, yes, sir?
Nobody showed up, but if, uh, since we're technically on item four, so before you do any action, if you just close the, no, there were no, no online comments, but if you'll just formally close the public hearing for number four, then you all can move to possible action.
I got you. All right. So if there is no further comment, we'll close item four and move on to item five and, um, would you like to discuss it further or would you like just to make a motion to send this to council?
I believe we can make a motion and second it, then it's discussion and then, then you can call the question.
Sounds good.
So I'll move to approve this for recommendation to the city council as we, as Matt has demonstrated to us on the board as revised, based on our comments.
Okay. You have a motion? Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All right, John. All right. Now open the discussion.
This is not the first meeting we've had on this. We've had plenty of discussion. I think as long as we're in agreement with the amendments, we've discussed it. But that's just my, I mean, if anybody has something, now's your turn. This is when the, this is when the preacher says, speak now or forever hold your peace.
I have nothing. I have nothing for you.
Okay, then I can say, point of order, we call the question.
I'm just looking, I'm just looking at faces here, you know?
I've got, I've got nothing. In case you, if you want affirmative confirmation, I have nothing for you.
All right, let's call the vote then. All in favor of recommending this to the council as, as amended by us, uh, previously? Say aye.
Aye.
And that looks like it's unanimous. Though it feels good to be past that.
Right?
So we have, uh,
Yeah, but now what's coming?
It's, it's informational only and not to be acted upon.
Yeah, but that was, that was a warm-up for what's about to roll down the hill.
So, yeah, this is just, yeah, just informational, but, um, in the, in the packet embedded in was the hyperlinks to the, there's a storyboard that Carolyn created and so it's got the kind of first draft of the revisions to the comprehensive plan. And, um, we were discussing with someone at the town hall meeting, there's really not a red, a redline version because this new version is just quite different from the plan that was adopted in 2011, so there's really not a redline version. But, uh, yeah, oh, and yeah, I believe there was a request, so I'll, I'll send a word version of the revisions that might be easier and you all can start, you know, commenting, editing. But just wanted you all to also be aware of the, the schedule, so, a town hall meeting was held on Monday. There probably will be another town hall meeting. Carolyn is working with, um, our GIS intern. One of the, some of the discussion was, you know, how to engage residents with this because, you know, you have a, you know, a very wordy document and, you know, how do you, how do you engage residents with this and, and get their feedback? And so we're going to work with the, the GIS intern to try to create like a more uh, interactive storyboard with maps and images and trying to get feedback, uh, that way. But we just want to do all to be aware of the schedule, so your, your May meeting, this will be the main focus and it will be, you know, it's a noticed, it will be a noticed public hearing. Yeah, so there's, there will be four public hearings in all. With poss, you know, the possible council adoption of the plan if it's, if it's ready, fully based and.
So, so we're given, we're given one shot to comment?
I mean, you can also, you can always call more, you know, there, there can always be more meetings scheduled as needed. This is just the, the initial schedule and this is what's been, th, these four public hearings have been noticed, you know, to the, to the paper, but
Okay.
there, we all, you know, we may need to schedule more meetings, but we also wanted you all to have, have the proposed revisions, you know, ahead of time so you can begin looking at it now and.
And then does it go through our committee and then onto the city council?
Yes.
Yes. So you, you all, I mean, as, in the state law, it, it's supposed to go to the planning commission while you, which is in this city. We have a, we have a planning and environmental committee, but you are the zoning commission.
Zoning and planning.
Yeah, zoning and planning.
Was it Monday's open house?
Monday was an open house, yes.
Yeah, a lot of people put little notes on it, et cetera.
Yes, so Carolyn is, Carolyn is compiling those now, so I will send you, I will send you all a word, you know, the word document of what was presented at the town hall Monday, like basically what, what planning and environmental committee has, has been working on for the past year, I believe. I will send you that word version. That's what's linked on the storyboard right now. Carolyn will be updating the storyboard with, hey, here were all the comments made, you know, at the town hall meeting. There's also a town hall forum where, we only have two statements on there right now. We're, again, we're hoping to kind of revamp that and have a more interactive way for people to comment, uh, for residents to, to comment, so.
I will say that this body is critically important in adoption of that comprehensive plan because it guides all of the land use documents. It guides every single land use document. And so the comp plan for our city acts as our constitution. It is a little bit wordy and it should be a little bit broader um, because it does feed into all of our land use map and all of our land use discussion. So I would highly encourage this committee, if, or this commission, if there are additional meetings that need to be held or additional public hearings that you feel need to be held, this is the forum. This is the most legal forum. We do have other, uh, open town halls and other public commentary where folks more, a little bit more interactive, but this is going to be where the rubber meets the road, here in the council. Yes, we can also call a work session and it will have long-term implications. So it is that important.
Just as a comment, I'm looking forward to it. From the standpoint of Monday was chaos of sorts, if you give my, my opinion, and people are just throwing darts at a board in essence and therefore I look forward to more, to more targeting of, of particular elements of it, which makes, we get to deliberate on each thing in a coherent manner versus haphazardly.
The schedule right now is, uh, a little bit quick because on the heels of this, the council had approved already revisions to the land development code. And the council approved revisions because we are behind the eight ball on some state statute requirements related to our code and approval of plans and permits that are submitted. So there was a thought that they would, you know, run parallel. Um, that's not going to be the case. We have some, uh, we have a meeting planned with the Board of Adjustment on some administrative changes that need to happen in our development process, i.e. the application and what's considered complete and those things to follow the statute. We're going to engage this commission as well. What is it that you want to see that constitutes a complete application so that we work that into the process? Right now we get a very, um, haphazard, uh, we have a very haphazard approach to our application and what actually makes its way into the system and into the review process. And we're caught behind the eight ball trying to make up time to do what is in the applicant's right uh, to request a permit and review.
That, that's why I was asking. I mean, this is our, what, third, fourth meeting on short-term rentals? And something as important as the comprehensive plan.
Oh, for sure.
The constitution of our city, as Sylvia pointed out. Having one meeting, I don't think was, was giving it the due consideration. But I'm glad to hear your plan and that we, we will have an opportunity to go through in a non-chaos kind of way. Our, well, our very own brand of chaos, which is different from the chaos that you saw on Monday. It's our chaos. And, and deliberate each section. And, you know, uh, I would like to keep it from being wordy. Essentially some, I mean, but we're given, we're given a legacy document that we're going to have to work with that's already cumbersome. But I would point out, and this is something that I, you know, learned within the last few years. If you know the, the children's book, Ralph, the Mouse and the Motorcycle, you know, the little children, written by Beverly Cleary, that book, which is tiny, is longer than the United States Constitution and all of its amendments.
Exactly.
So, we can get a good document by writing precisely and shortly. It doesn't have to be wordy. Trouble is, do we have the time to condense it all? But we will endeavor to do so. So, uh, looking forward to the challenge. And Matt, if you could get us the document and get us all of the various things that are happening as they happen. So like, for example, if something comes out of the city council meeting before our meeting, I'd like to be notified, like this is, these are the main points of what happened in the council meeting so that we can have, I mean, rather than watch the entire council meeting, distill, these are the highlights. I need the readers digest ESPN highlights kind of thing. Thank you.
Well, um, is this considered the final from P and E? Or they, they'll be having meetings along the way before us too, so we can see what they've also.
There's still a little bit of work in progress from P and E. Um, not a lot. They've been working on it for a year. There's a little bit of refinement, but for the most part, they've gone through the entire document.
Yeah, that's pretty good. I tried to get through it all. I'm just kind of overloaded right now with, with Art Fest, but one, one thing I was curious about is that on the map, which of course is 2011, one thing that's since this was our own, uh, allowing, uh, neighborhood commercial in a very, the very bottom rectangle. So that, that would need to be updated on this map. I was just curious, what other things like that are, are not on this map? Could we get, would it be asking too much to get a sort of an updated version of where we are now with things like that? Corrected? Right.
So, every time the commission and council do make a zoning change, not only does the zoning map need to change, but the future land use map also should be changing as well as zoning, as zoning, as potential properties are amended. But, yeah, we have a, if you want to pull up on our website, we have a, we have the current zoning map. If you go to Departments, Maps, so, here's our current zoning map. So, this includes the zoning changes that happened in 2020, 2021, at, at, on Highway 290 Esters, and then that.
Oh, I see.
So, that is our current zoning map.
So, it's, the changes that need to be updated, which you've done here, are just small little things here and there? There's no, like, major...
Correct. We're required to have a current land use map, and we're required to have a future land use map. And our future land use map is more than just land use. It should be informing our capital improvement plans, what type of infrastructure, roads, growth are we having, and where should we be spending the appropriate dollars for orderly development, which is what all of this should guide. And the comp plan should be brief. The wordy substance comes in the zoning ordinance in preambles and definitions and those kinds of things, so I'm, I'm happy that we're going to go through a methodical approach, but this is the, this is the primary body that will have that recommendation to the council.
Can we assume there's going to be more citizen participation?
That's the goal. So, one great idea that Carolyn had is that at the Public Works Open House, where residents get free stuff, we will, you know, we'll, we'll try to have, maybe, hopefully, maybe more orderly, but we'll try to have lots of engagement where residents can provide feedback and comments, and we can tell them what's going on at that open house. So, that open house will be kind of in the middle of all this. That will be Saturday, May 21st. Normally, the open house happens in March, but just due to lots of things, we had to schedule for May, but that's, that's when we're really hoping to get folks that normally don't come to these types of meetings to engage. And, yeah, we can, we can have, at the Spring Fling event, we can have a, you know, maybe a QR code, hey, check this out, so...
When is that?
Spring Fling is Sunday, May 15th, at Ducks, 3:00 to 5:00 p.m., and the open house will be 9:00 to noon, Saturday, May 21st, here at City Hall.
You're invited to Ducks for food and a band.
That's on the 15th?
Did you get a band?
We got a band.
Do I know, do I know them?
I think you know the band.
I highly recommend the band.
Who's the band?
My partner's band, Congress Rhythms or Rhythm Congress?
Rhythm Congress.
Rhythm Congress.
Rhythm Congress, okay.
If you like brass, they do like Chicago-type stuff along with, it's like eight pieces in the band.
These, these fine gentlemen and, and ladies on the, on the Arts Commission brought Administrative Law Judge Hank Card and the Austin Lounge Lizards to Art Fest one year, so I got to watch a judge, I got to watch a judge that I, you know, practiced before onstage.
And I'm sure he got a great deal of applause. That was...
Coming from one section.
That was well-earned. Should be fun.
That's 3:00 to 5:00?
3:00 to 5:00.
That's Saturday?
It's a Sunday.
Sunday.
Free swag, free food, and free food.
Firearm.
No free beer?
No free beer. I said for 50's, but it didn't, but I was out.
They don't live with those rules in Washington.
Okay, all right.
I think we can close six.
I think. We can close six and go on to the adjournment if I hear a motion.
So moved, seconded.
Moved to second, and all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you, everybody.
Another one of the books.
Thank you.
That show, it's getting longer and more detailed.
Is it?
I was almost expecting left-handed Indonesian fisherman in a blue shirt, holding a churro.
Is this coming from Michelle?
Yeah. Toward the end, I'm just like, really? I will do my best.